Before I start, I'd like to say, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for taking time out of your activities to come here this evening to participate in this seminar, which we have the Honorable Guest Minister Colonel Charles Jr., Minister in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade. We will do a distinguished introduction in a moment, but I just want to acknowledge that it is a very busy afternoon, a lot to be undertaken. So the fact that you have taken out time to be here, we're here to listen, we're here to give feedback, we're here to take it and be able to take action at some particular point. So without further ado, we will start off. I'll ask everyone to please rise. I will introduce Cassandra Parker to please come forward to sing our national anthem. We'll start off with "Canada" and then the national anthem. Give her round of applause. I would like to call up Reverend Randall Kelly to please lead us in prayer.
We want to be thankful to God today for such a wonderful presentation. It's the honorary minister and our friends. Eternal Father, thank you for your greatness and your willingness to help us in bringing the ministering servants together, both ecclesiastical and civil leaders. May we ask your wisdom to govern amidst the conflicts, issues of our time. May we experience a sense of welfare and true need for our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in doing good and to do our best, the ability to work together in harmony even when it's honest disagreement. May we have a personal peace of our lives and joy to complete our task. Like your words rightly said, if my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and will clean their hands. May God bless you.
As we roll into our program, protocol dictates our thorough acknowledgements. I'll simply ask some of the individuals to do away because each individual will become at their particular points to be able to engage in conversation or to bring some form of introduction regarding their organization or initiatives that are taking place. First, we'll start out the Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, again, Mr. Colonel Charles Jr., Ms. Janice Miller, High Commissioner of Jamaica to Canada, Mr. Lloyd Wilkes, Council General of Jamaica at Toronto, Ms. Adoma Patterson, President of Jamaican Canadian Association, Mrs. Sylvanas Thompson, one of the co-chairs of Jamaican Basque Canada Board Member, Mr. Rupert Francis, Lead, and Mr. Kevin Jr., who are part of the team, and Mr. Francis will go further into the team of the Dais for Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force. I would like to also welcome all of our faith ministries that are here and their ministers that are present, and of course, all of you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking again the time out of your day. Without further ado, I will call up Ms. Adoma Patterson to brief greetings.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Distinguished head table, Minister, all protocols observed. I want to welcome the Minister and High Commissioner CG, who is always an honorary member, those who are visiting, guests in the audience, welcome to the Jamaican Canadian Association. Thank you for taking the time to come this afternoon. JCA is 56 years old this year, and we have always been proud of the fact that this is a space and we're able to provide a space to talk about the issues that are of concern to Jamaicans and others, both here in Canada and in Jamaica. And today is no exception. All of us are passionate about this issue, and I'm sure all of us have ideas, anecdotes, evidence. We're all impacted by the issue of crime. And we know Jamaicans always have solutions and are always willing to give their perspective on what the government needs to do. And so I want to thank you on behalf of JCA and to the Task Force, the Dais for Crime Task Force, for using JCA for this discussion. I would say that JCA has and continues to talk about Jamaicans that are here, both in a temporary and permanent capacity, particularly those who are experiencing, who have contact with the justice system, those who are facing deportation, those who do not have access to legal services here, and those who are working in a temporary capacity in Canada, particularly foreign workers. We have been really looking and focusing on creating awareness about the impact of foreign workers, the conditions in which they have to experience here in Canada. And so, you know, all of these issues feed into each other. And so we look forward to the conversation. More importantly, we look forward to ways that we can play a role and that each of you in this room and in Jamaica can also play a role. So thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Adoma. And as Adoma stated, the next person up, of course, should be someone that you all know, being resident of Toronto. Of course, our CG, Mr. Open, Mr. Welcome, Mr. Eloquent with his conversation. And very engaging, without further ado, Lloyd Wilkes.
Thank you, Madam MC. I feel a little bit like I'm being set up before my bosses with our eloquent story. But never mind, let me first of all acknowledge our freshly minted, shining and very precious Minister. And of course, and of course, I would be absolutely out of order not to praise one of our most charming adversaries, almost charming Ambassador, High Commissioner Miller. We haven't seen enough of her in Toronto, but we've seen her today, so we have to be very grateful. Rupert, Dr. Rupert Francis, Lead, the Crime Prevention, Intervention and Prevention Task Force. Of course, with his team, he already had mentioned our Adoma Patterson. I want to speak as well to a number of persons in this room from the security forces who have made themselves available to come here, some of whom in fact migrated from Jamaica and are now flipping the two places. Many of you may not know James Golding, former Deputy Minister of the Police. And the list goes on. In fact, right beside him is one of our Deputy Ministers involved in the Protective Services here.
Not even known.
What I have to acknowledge, now the acknowledgements could go on all night long. Suffice it to say that we have a family affair going on this evening. We are looking at Jamaica, Jamaicans, and our collective welfare. And I'm pleased to say that over the years, we have benefited from that family approach. I don't know if it started, I don't know if Benji sell a cow and send one abroad, ensuring that the next celebre will be taken care of and that as we go along, we take care of each other. But that's when it started in 1914 or 1870 or whenever it started. It's a tradition that lived on to the extent that today we benefit from Jamaicans who left our shores and who have always looked back and continued to ensure that the rock remains what it is, strong, steadfast and firm. I just want to give a shout out to the rest of our family, both at home and abroad, for your commitment, your loyalty, and your continued support of Jamaica and Jamaicans. In fact, I dare say in front of my boss that you are probably better ambassadors than most of us will ever be because you have continued to make Jamaica relevant to your neighbors, your friends, and to everybody that's here to look or listen. You are who continue to ensure that brand Jamaica, Jamaican culture, or lifestyle continue to soar so that when the rest of us come here, we're already famous because you have made it so. So I want to thank you very much, first and foremost, for ensuring that our Minister had a decent welcome and he had ears to listen and people with whom we can have a conversation. Being here for me is everything because you had choices. And believe me, you have lots of them this weekend in particular. There's an event taking place next door. There are several taking place across the GTA. And so that you made this a priority for you is extremely important and valued, I can assure you, by the team you see here today. So please let us have an engaging, positive and constructive conversation. You know, and I know, that Jamaica is what it is because of who we are as a people. And there's nothing wrong with Jamaica, as one of our former GGs have said, that what is right with Jamaica cannot fix. And together in this room, I know we can positively move forward with decent, meaningful conversation that can bring us further along than we already are. I also just want to take another minute to acknowledge the work of the Government of Jamaica. And especially since the Minister is here, I want him to know that you are part of why we are succeeding and that you want to understand what GOJ, the Government of Jamaica, is actually doing to address the issues and what part you can continue to play. So if we can have that as a guiding part of the narrative, I'm willing to guarantee that the end of this evening proceedings, we will have a useful outcome. Would you agree? So without further ado, and without running out my welcome, I just want to thank you once again and draw my seat.
And we welcome next, as noted, our High Commissioner to Canada, Ms. Janice Miller, who, those of you who have not met her yet, take the time again at the proceeds to get a clear understanding, a very well-versed individual, articulate, very warm and charming. So Ms. Miller.
Thank you very much, Madam Master Ceremony, Ms. Yvette. Hello, everyone. Senator the Honorable Colonel Charles Jr., Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, Mr. Lloyd Wilkes, Council General of Jamaica, Toronto, Ms. Adoma Patterson, President Jamaican Canadian Association, Dr. Rupert Francis, Global Task Force Lead of the Jamaica Dais for Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force, quite a multiple, and other members of the Task Force, all the distinguished ladies and gentlemen, and I add my welcome and recognition to Dr. Sylvanas Thompson and all persons here. Good afternoon. It is an honor to extend a warm welcome to Senator the Honorable Colonel Charles Jr. on this visit to Toronto. We are delighted, Ministers, you have heard, that since the assumption of your new portfolio responsibilities of Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, just a little over a week ago, your first engagement with the diaspora here in Canada, which is home to over 300,000 Jamaicans. I join in thanking all persons for their attendance at this town hall meeting hosted by the JDCIPTF. I also thank the leadership and membership of the Jamaican Canadian Association for their hospitality in providing the use of the facilities for this important event. The Jamaica Dais for Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force under the leadership of Dr. Rupert Francis and with the tremendous work of Kevin Jr. must be commended for the initiative in arranging this town hall meeting under the theme "How the Diaspora Can Aid in Jamaica's Crime-Free Future." This theme is indeed timely, as it goes without saying that all Jamaicans, regardless of geographical location, are concerned about crime and security in our beloved country. While the Government of Jamaica has taken decisive action to deal with crime, at the same time, the scope of the challenge is of such that all Jamaicans, regardless of geographical location, have to be involved in dealing with the scourge of crime and its impact on our country. In this connection, the Jamaica Diaspora here in Canada and elsewhere has an integral role in ensuring that we are able to build the Jamaica we want, including through contributions to a strengthened security framework. Indeed, the importance of continued diaspora engagement for the economic development of Jamaica and the social advancement and improvement in the quality of life of Jamaicans cannot be overstated. The economic framework put in place by the Government to bolster economic development and job creation has been resulting in positive gains. As the Government of Jamaica continues to place high priority on the safety and security of all Jamaicans, work continues on a number of initiatives aimed at social intervention support through the Zos of Special Operations, Zozos, and judicial reform. The support given by the Government of Canada, for instance, to the Justice Sector Reform Program demonstrates the commitment of the Government in working with bilateral, international, and other partners to reduce levels of criminality, creating a safe environment and ensuring efficiency across the justice system. The High Commission underscores the importance of the work undertaken by Jamaican Canadians, including through the Jamaica Diaspora Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force in providing law enforcement expertise and solutions to address crime and violence in Jamaica. This is an example of the benefits of active partnership in support of Jamaica. These perspectives and others will be further elaborated, sorry, by the keynote speaker for this town hall meeting, whom I now have the honor and privilege to introduce. Senator the Honorable Colonel P. Charles Jr. is the Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade with specific responsibility for diaspora affairs. This appointment to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade follows his distinguished tenure as Minister of State in the Ministry of National Security, where he had portfolio duties for the Department of Correctional Services, the Jamaica Combined Cadet Force, and special projects within the National Security Portfolio. An attorney at law, Senator Charles is qualified to practice law in Jamaica and the United States of America. And during his enviable professional career, he has served with distinction as a judicial clerk, senior clerk of court, prom counsel at the Office of the Director of Public Prosecutions, and as the lead counsel and managing attorney of the law offices of Colonel P. Charles Jr. The Senator is a former president of the Law Society and a former president of the Guild of Audits Graduates of the University of West Indies, where he earned two honors degrees, a Bachelor of Science, double major in biochemistry and geology, and a Bachelor of Laws. Additionally, he holds a Master of Laws degree from the George Washington University Law School in Washington DC, where he was awarded the Thomas Bergenthal Scholarship for Academic Performance. In addition to his academic accomplishments, Senator Charles is passionate about community service demonstrated through his work as a youth advocate. He also continues to actively participate in community activities geared towards uplifting undeserved communities and protecting the most vulnerable. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming to the podium the Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, Senator the Honorable Colonel Charles Jr.
Ladies and gentlemen, with that blown introduction, I have to ask for one pause because I air, there's one more person that will speak, so I'm sorry. Rupert Francis is the lead to the Jamaican Diaspora Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force. So Rupert, if I can ask you to come and please give an oversight overview.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the persons who have journeyed here this afternoon to share with us this occasion. I was really, I'm so pleased to see so many persons that I've known for many, many years in the audience and able to share with them our thoughts on crime and violence. I do not wish to stake away or steal my Minister's thunder. I would never do that because I'm one of his chief admirers. And I did tell him that I made a prayer and that we would have a great Minister to help us in diaspora affairs, and God has delivered him. So from that perspective, I just wanted to share that with you. I'd like to welcome first of all the Honorable Minister, the High Commissioner, the Council General, Lloyd Wilkes, the Advisory Board Members to the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade. These are people who, Yvette Lappurn and Dr. Sylvanas Thompson, and also the Jamaican Canadian Association. I wanted to give them a big round of applause. I'd like to also recognize the members of the Task Force who have been with us from inception. Dr. Chubus Nelson, is he here?
I think so.
Okay, that's him. Let me round up all. Malachi Dermot Smith is a former policeman, now entertainer. We might talk to him. Michelle Laidlaw, she's here. She's one of our members. Mark Millred, our photographer, extraordinary press, he's here from Hartford. He journeyed all the way to come and record this event. All members, regardless of anybody, please forgive me. I just wanted to share quickly with you how this task force started. I remember the pledge we took as young people in our schools before God, a normal mankind. We pledged our loyalty, we pledged ourselves to do what we could and what we can for our country. I myself, as a boy scout, made other pledges as well too. And I, you know, I have taken a number of pledges in my life, and this is one that I take very seriously, that I would always see that the country of Jamaica is guided in a particular way and follow the precepts of love and loyalty to each other. And that's why I think we are doing what we're doing. So three years, almost three years ago, we decided to start the Crime Task Force when we saw the crime getting out of hand. I do not believe for one moment that any Jamaican was born to be a criminal because nobody who could have invented reggae could really be a criminal. Can you imagine dancing to a crime or something to that? It's amazing, joyful, respectful, and so on. I grew up in a situation where I should not be speaking to you today from where I am because I had no father figure. And then what are the odds that somebody had a, you know, but we took a village to raise a child, and today we are here together to say that that child has a reason. That child is here now. And every one of us, we have our stories, right? But we're not killing anybody. We're not taking away anything from anybody. We want to make sure that Jamaica stands as a beacon to the rest of the world. And that's what we are looking for. Yes, we're gonna have a few things, issues. Yes, we're gonna have a little kiaskias and koskos. But in the end, anywhere you go and you touch a Jamaican, you're gonna feel him on the other side and rise for it. So the vision was, the mission is to support Jamaica's drive to efficient law enforcement. And so the name itself, and I'm not gonna be long because I know the Minister has to come. I'm not gonna do to him what someone did to me a long time ago, but I'm not gonna mention that. And I am telling you that we saw us coming together as one, both people from any walk of life, not just law enforcement, to make sure that we came up with a model to assist our young people from the cradle to the grave to become good citizens, not only of our country and our communities, but the world. That's what we saw. And so we're drawn from an eclectic, multifaceted group of people that we're gonna mold them into what we are hoping the future Jamaican will look like. Respecting law, respecting order, respecting religion of any kind, respecting people. You know, when I was lecturing at the university in California, I came up with a I came up with a little philosophy. It's a little philosophy. I thought my voice was loud enough. But anyway, yes, a little philosophy. It was called building a house of communication. And it had as the words, as the, as the the pieces of the positive bill of the house. And at the base of the foundation, as you know, must be the strongest, was the word attitude. What to bring to the table. And from that perspective, we started to build the house with a good foundation. And then we had pillars that would support that. One was building a good relationship. The second one was respect. And where did I get that from? The Rastafarian respect. Inherent in that, it said, if I respect you, you respect me back. And so we are seeing, tending to lose some of those issues, things as we go along. The next one was responsibility. We have to be responsible in our communication. You know, my mother said to me, I brought you in this world and I surely will take you out and I believe in you. Because my mother was the first terrorist dying. So the point I'm trying to make, and I do as a result of that. And I behaved myself and I did what I had to do because I knew that I had to set an example for those that come after me. Finally, once you have done the first right, responded, built a relationship, once you have respect, once you have your responsibility, and finally, you'll have rapport. In other words, you'll have synergy. That's what we want back in Jamaica. That's what we're looking for. We have a lot of it. We have it in our music, we have it in our religious talk and expressions. But some of it is getting lost. I'm hoping that this task force, with the type of people, law enforcement, psychologists, criminologists, faith-based education, et cetera, will be able to build this community, once block at a time. Finally, we have been to all over the world. We have been to UK and they are thriving based upon this type of thing that we are doing right now. Unofficial, they're thriving. We are going next, we went to London, Birmingham, Nottingham, and we're going to all the parts of London where there are cells of Jamaica. We do believe that that's the answer, part of the answer, to resolving the issue. Now, we have done it in the United States and we're continuing it. And we're hoping that today's launch, we will be able to continue it in Canada and beyond. Ladies and gentlemen, that's a synopsis of what we're trying to do. And we cannot do it alone. We have to do it together. The word "we" and we have to do it in love. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for listening to this. I hope that you have become a part of this mission and we have something there before you go, the sign that you will be. Thank you very much.
I would like to add further ado, I give you Minister of State.
Thank you very much, Master of Ceremonies. You know, Captain Francis thinks he's smart. He made sure to steal my applause. But what a wonderful evening. It is always good to speak to beautiful people. Let me thank the High Commissioner for her introduction and kind words. I have to, of course, acknowledge our distinguished Consul General, Mr Lloyd Wilkes. Also, I know that there is, there are several members of the Consulate General who also have assisted, so I acknowledge them. I have met this president of the Jamaica Canada Association, so I greet you and your members, as well as Captain Francis and the members of the Diaspora Crime Intervention and Prevention Task Force, as a mouthful. The wonderful members from ABEL, the Association of Black Law Enforcers, who embraced me yesterday and kept me up until 1 AM. But thank you very much for the warm embrace as I came to Canada yesterday. Also, it's important for me to acknowledge all of the Jamaicans here, whether you are born in Jamaica, of Jamaican descent, or simply just in love with this country. I thank you for being here and I thank you again for the invitation. You know, this is the first time that I'm actually hearing Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade. So I have to, I have to give a couple of congratulations. For two years, I've served in the Ministry of National Security. And though it is among, if not the most challenging ministry, it's a ministry that nobody wants to be in because it's a political graveyard, I must tell you that I was inspired by the challenge. And I had, when I was there, responsibility to transform how we saw correctional services and to take under my wings, particularly the youth offenders, in developing programmes that helped them to see themselves first in a different way. And I think we did a fair job. So it is difficult leaving it because there's so much left to be done. But I don't believe that I am here because of my own doing. I'm called to serve and so if it is that he wants me to be in Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, then so be it. I'll serve in this capacity. And I intend to do so with the same energy and focus and commitment that I gave to my last task. I am only blessed, really, because I know that with this responsibility comes the opportunity for me to be able to engage with you. Jamaicans who love Jamaica, Jamaicans who are committed to Jamaica, Jamaicans who are upset sometimes in Jamaica, but it's because you love Jamaica. And believe me, I think the Prime Minister knew what he was doing when he chose somebody who's a part of the diaspora to be the representative for the diaspora. Because living or having lived outside for such a long time, I appreciate your concerns because they are my concerns. Let me also say I have to give particular recognition, even though I know that this is the entire task force, Captain, Mr Junam, again, who has been in contact with my team in Jamaica and who I'm certain has had so much to do with making these excellent arrangements on my behalf. I thank you, sir, and I thank everyone that has assisted you, some of whom I'm sure I didn't even met. So today, being my first official engagement as Minister of State in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, it is going to be the one that I remember. Your faces, your questions, your concerns, your handshakes, your embraces will be forever etched in my history as the one that started my responsibilities and journey in this ministry. But this is a special moment for me. We have, in the last two years, embarked on what is a very challenging but important task, trying to transform the way we see crime in Jamaica and to see the criminal activity as connected to everything. And as in the Ministry of National Security, I often say that it is the ministry that is connected to every other ministry, impacts every other ministry, and is impacted by every other ministry. So we can't see crime as simply murder or robbery. That murder occurred when that little boy was told that he was nothing, when he was not sent to school, when the decision was made by him to seek association with people who made him feel important. So he joined the gang. It is the combination of all of those events in the life that led to that murder. And so it is really a continuum that leads to that decision that your brain makes. It's not your hand, it's your brain that tells your hand to pull the gun, to pull the trigger. And all of that is because of a series of events. So when we look on crime, and particularly for Jamaica, we suffer from very violent crime. And that's our problem, the rate of violent crime in Jamaica, murders and shootings. We have to see the solution in a very broad and comprehensive context, which is not just a response to crime, as in more cars and more guns, but understanding how is a criminal developed? What is causing the criminal mind to be nurtured and fermented? It has a lot to do how we educate or do not educate, with the family structure, with the value system, with the shared goals that we have as a community, whether you live or do not live in Jamaica. So I am mindful of the fact that where we are today, having last year over sixteen hundred murders, is not something which has occurred overnight. It's not something that occurred in the last ten years. It is like that little leak that you have in your bathroom. Just a drip, a drip. And then you don't know until you get your water bill. And your water bill is doubled. And you say, well, this one little leak, because it is consistent and it is constant. And so, in the same way as it has taken time to ferment itself and to be evolving to where it is now, as a crime monster, beast, our response must be as collaborative, as effective, as consistent, as constant, as unified, if we are to beat it, if we are to defeat it. We have to take all of the emotions we have as Jamaicans, all of the anger that we feel, the love that we feel. And we have to, in a very coordinated way, find a strategic approach to making practical contributions to defeat the crime monster. Now, as our High Commissioner said, we have over three hundred thousand Jamaicans in Canada, I think probably just in the province of Ontario. And so, yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with, I believe it was nine of us meeting, a dinner hosted by the members of ABEL, the Association of Black Law Enforcers. And I say to you, I could form a cabinet, one of those nine persons, and a really efficient one. If yesterday is any demonstration of the excellence in intellectual diversity that lies in our diaspora, then there is no way why we cannot solve our problems. What it means is that we have the solution, but we have to find a way, and that's my responsibility now, to create the kinds of partnerships that will allow for us to be effective and sustainable. Now, I have to take the time to commend you because I know that several of you, before I was born, and some of you, you know, this is the thing when you, when you are known to people, when you used to wear khaki. One or two of you will come and whisper, it's a change in happy. Or I know you when you used to wear khaki and short pants. But I also know of the contribution that you have made. Sir Coling, Deputy Commissioner, sacrifice you have made for our country. And several others who have lived in Jamaica, served in Jamaica, contributed to Jamaica, whether it is working with civil service in the private sector. Others who have gone to Uyghur and then left Jamaica but still continue to give back in several different ways. I want to commend you. Because we don't, we don't take enough time to thank each other, to just say those simple words of commendation, to let you know that what you have done and what you are doing is acknowledged and respected and recognised. So let me take the time now to say to you who have been selfless and who continue to give despite the challenges, despite, despite those who you are giving to sometimes making you feel like you're begging them something. But you know, in an article that I was reading, it said that our diaspora holds individuals who, eighty percent of whom have received tertiary education. Many who have, through hard work, been financially prudent, let me put it that way. But most importantly, the diaspora has a responsibility, Miss, Madam President. We have a responsibility because we, in the diaspora, have been blessed. Many through your own hard work, but others through the work of others. You've been blessed with education, some with very good jobs, others with the exposure to how other systems work. And we have to make sure that we understand our responsibility to our nation, Jamaica. Everybody in this room is here because you understand your responsibility. Or you wouldn't be here. You'd be elsewhere. And we have some Jamaicans who are not here today, but who, Mr Mitchell, we have to acknowledge them. I had the opportunity earlier to meet with the Honourable Alvin Curling from Franklin Town, who came here and broke the ceiling, totally shattered it, in becoming Speaker of the House in his province. First black Speaker of the House. A minister who opened, opened the doors to so many others becoming. Right now, he is at a ceremony where his street is being named after him. Alvin Curling Crescent. Jamaica from Franklin Town. And when I asked the High Commissioner, I said, so hold on. I hear you have two or three Jamaicans getting out of Ontario this year. That's just it here. We are, we are an amazing people. We have to find a way to redefine our communication. Yesterday, talking to Miss Blackburn, our diaspora advisory board member and the other members from ABEL. One of the things that I mentioned to them is that we have to, we have to find a more efficient way of communicating as a people to the diaspora and from the diaspora. Because you depend so much on the internet and on the media that everything you digest about your Jamaica is fed to you. And just like children going to Burger King, they want you to come back. They want you to keep buying. So they're gonna feed you. So they're gonna feed you what they think excites your brain and your neurons. And sometimes it is not always the most accurate perspective. And sometimes there are things which you ought to know, but you're not told. My responsibility as the Minister of State now is to make sure that there is a covalent bond between the diaspora and Jamaica. And to make sure that when we define Jamaica, it is not only by geographical means. When I lived in Washington, I was as Jamaican as when I am here now. The fact that I used to live there for a few years didn't make me less or more Jamaican. And we must take from those other states who have found the formula, successful formula, of utilizing their diaspora in the best way. You don't hear them talking in divisive ways. I won't call the names of some of the nations, but they have found a way to tap into the potential of every single person that you don't even have to barely know who born there, none of these things. Once you have a third cousin who has visited, they'll take you. I don't know any other country like Jamaica. I have been around the world, and I must tell you, everywhere you go, if you send, if you even stop at one, they want to take a picture with you. I went to World Cup in Brazil, and I don't leave my Jamaican flag. So I had the flag and I tied it around my head. Me and a couple of friends who love football, we were actually, used to play football in high school, and we promised that when World Cup was in Brazil, we would go together, and we went. Everywhere, people stopped us. Just to, just to take a picture beside our flag. Just to be associated to this image, the brand that they know of as Jamaica. If we are able to unlock the potential of our people, the problem that we're going to have is border control. And it won't be in relation to guns and drugs coming in. Can you imagine a Jamaica where we have to ask the United States to get a visa? Can you imagine it? Now, the question for the diaspora, the question for us, is how do we create it? And we have religious leaders here today. So I'll even challenge you further, do you believe it? When I was in Barbados, Lloyd, and I decided to run for king president, it was some of the Jamaicans who said to me, I remember one in particular who said, you're crazy, it's a waste of time. Because they don't like you, they don't like Jamaica. Give thanks to my grandmother and for my parents, who instilled in me a confidence and a gracious capacity to love people regardless. And I never felt that way, I never felt that way about the Haitians. And so I never treated them in that way. And what happened? I won landslide victory. And most of the people who voted for me was Haitians. So sometimes, we ourselves are our greatest weapon. We wear ourselves down by accepting certain rhetorics, and even more by repeating it. And it's not because you dislike Jamaica, it's because you love it. But you see, you in this room have a responsibility. You are the critical thinkers, you are the innovators, the change makers, the ones who have been exposed to other systems and who, if given the opportunity, I believe will be able to identify solutions to drive our country to a place of stability, growth, and development. You first have to assess how you're communicating about your own country. What are you repeating in your own mind, in your own home? What are you telling your friends? Part of that is because some information you don't have. So what is a state of emergency? Are you aware that during the state of emergency, that there has been an eighty percent fall in murders? Eighty percent fall in murders within that zone? Are you aware that yes, there's been displacement of criminal activity, but also a fall in violent crime nationally? Are you aware that we have arrested more gang members and gunmen and family members of gangsters in the last six months because of those interventions than before? You wouldn't be aware, because you don't see some of those things coming through the media, and you have not been told. But again, I imagine this is my responsibility. And so we are going to have to focus getting on communication. Madam President, as we had a brief conversation at the door, I'm an active leader. In the correctional services, they would tell me that they have never seen a minister come into the institution as much as me. Not two weeks passed without me being inside of a correctional institution. To the point where some of the inmates, I knew their story. And so, the minute they got out, came to me. What it led to is a building of trust and confidence that caused me to receive more information and intelligence than I could imagine. The same cell phones that we were trying to get out of the institution were used to call me and give me information at three A M. I think this though. That's because we took the time, myself and a very able team, to develop the confidence and a relationship where people understood why we were here. And I think that is what we're going to have to do with whatever we are defining as the diaspora. Because, and that's another question, what is the diaspora? In twenty eighteen, when I was in Washington, I was in Jamaica every month. So was I properly a member of the diaspora? I don't know. To me, perhaps the better way to define it is to say Jamaicans. Because that envelops all of us, and it doesn't cause us to separate ourselves by geographical lines. So Jamaicans, wherever you are, we will have to find a way to communicate. There's not enough time for me to go through everything. But, and I know that I'll be here perhaps quite often, but I want to just make reference to a few things regarding the achievements of the government in the last two years, and rather, what we've tried to do as regards to growth and development. You must be aware that in the last year, we've had a record number of persons being employed, one point two million people in Jamaica, which reinforces the government's commitment towards changing that whole platform of opportunities for our people, especially the youngsters who take the time to become educated. In addition to having record employment, we now also have the lowest numbers in the last decade of youth unemployment, which is very important. Because you would understand that the criminal activity that we're seeing is primarily concentrated around young men who are victims and perpetrators of the criminal activity. So, the fact that we have a decline in youth unemployment is a significant aspect of where the government is seeking to move the country. In addition, our economic reform program remains on target with growth in our net international reserves, which is very important. It has significantly increased to more than three point one billion U S, which is important for the country, particularly a country where we are positioned, which is, we are exposed to hurricanes and other natural disasters. We also have seen the decline in our debt to GDP ratio since twenty sixteen, where it was at one hundred and twenty percent, moving down five percent. For those of you who are economists, you'll understand the importance of that. We have also continued to successfully pass the targets that have been set by the IMF. So the first two BIDOL reviews saw us with excellent reviews from the International Monetary Fund. And I know that it is an issue of contention for many Jamaicans. Many Jamaicans in the diaspora who I speak to don't like really the concept of the IMF. Because there's a belief that Jamaica should be able to do it on its own. We should, but we didn't, so let's get real. And if we're gonna protect our country and our economy, then this is one route which so far has proven successfully. Because we've been able to pass, so far, the test, what we're seeing is greater stability in our dollar, where the dollars actually appreciate. And that has a domino effect on employment and investment and opportunities, and also on crime and violence. In addition, many of you would have heard of the one point five, uh, which was a big part of the election in twenty sixteen. And at that time, there was discussion as to whether it would have a negative or a positive impact on the country. I'm very pleased to say that the personal income tax threshold, which was increased to one point five million, has resulted in approximately four hundred thousand Jamaicans on the pay as you earn, which is P A Y E, falling below the threshold. That has actually done what we said it would do, which is leading to a greater spurring of confidence in the sector, leading to greater stability in the economy and more jobs. We also have welcomed more than four million visitors to our shores. Tourism earnings amount to approximately three billion dollars, which increased more than ten point two percent over the previous year. This is very significant. These numbers are significant numbers because if you look on the historical context of our country, the evolution of our economy, what you see over the last twenty to thirty years is a consistent decline, a consistent decay. So having a ten point two percent increase in tourism, having stability in the economy increases those small in the employment sector. This is the trajectory which we have to move our country on if we're going to reach to a place of growth and development. And I can hear Ms. Blackburn, by kicking me, tell me to calm down. So, in closing, let me just say this. I look forward to the several opportunities that I will have to comment, to dialogue with you. I want to encourage you, and I want to thank you for taking the time to be here. Uh, I want to hear from you. I don't know how much time we have. But believe me, between myself, the High Commissioner, Conseil General, President of the Jamaican Canadian Association, and all of the other associations, we are going to find, and if not find, develop, the platform for you and I to be able to engage each other. I want to receive your recommendations and your ideas and your suggestions, as well as asking you to continue to pray for your country. It is important for us to know that if we're gonna take steps to change Jamaica, don't expect it to be smooth and easy. Don't expect our positive steps not to be counteracted by those who want to maintain the status quo. Don't expect for change not to be kind of chaotic at times. But they can't beat us if we work together. There are too many of us, there are too many of us who love Jamaica, who think well about Jamaica, who have a genuine desire to see that our country grows, for them to even think about meeting us. The problem, and I'll give you this one example, is that we are suffering from a fear, the same fear that makes one man with a thirtieth come into a room of five hundred and hold up everybody for one week. Who will sacrifice themselves? Who will step out? Who will take up the mantle of being president? Of being on the task force? And perhaps I shouldn't be speaking to you, because the fact that you're here means that you are the leaders in the community. But how many people are you going to speak to when you leave here? How many people will you discuss the need for them to contribute to Jamaica? We have a responsibility, and I think that we have a great opportunity. I look forward to it, I thank all of you. And before Ms. Blackburn takes me off, let me say thank you to her and to the diaspora advisory board, who I assume will be advising me within the next week on all of the issues relating to Jamaicans and how we interact with Jamaicans globally. I thank you.
So just to get some housekeeping. As you note, our distinguished table at the front will be taking notes. Your questions will be directed to the Minister. I will go into the audience, I'll stand to the middle aisle. I will try to make sure I answer any questions from each side, we'll alternate accordingly. I would also ask for the ground rules, this is a heated topic. We know some individuals, you have personal affronts that have happened to you. We know that you have had personal issues with regards to your property or individuals. Let's try to keep it succinct as best as we can, let's try to keep the emotion out, even though we know it is hard. And let's direct the questions so that we can get to the actionable items or try to find a solution. I've asked for a flip chart, so I'm going to then try to chart what is being stated to what I was just asking, my portfolio along with Sylvanas. We are the individuals that have to take your information and to, of course, advise, and then there's further information you'll get later. But I would ask you, let's be respectful to everyone. Uh, the Minister will do his best to be able to answer to you. As we just noted, he has stepped out of this form of portfolio, but his knowledge, intellect, and connections are still right succinct and strong, and he can reach out and touch. You also have your High Commissioner, we have our C G here in Toronto. So we fell further notice, I will do that. I was first person who would like to ask their first two show of hands. That's when I just saw went up, I am going to go there first, and then I'll come to you, sir.
I am Frederick Williams, retired police officer from Jamaica, Kingston. First of all, Captain Francis, I'd like to be on your team. He wrote my name, and I'll be coming to you after meeting. I have the Minister, Madam High Commissioner. Minister, I have for you just about three questions. One is a suggestion to you, and two are questions, very simple, I have recommends on those. First of all, I ask you, sir, if you would get back to our government, the matter of reviewing the Negligence Act with a view of bringing it back in before with a view of bringing it back into force, because we have too many ivory hands in Jamaica. When I served, the act was enforced, it was abolished after a while, and then the fabric comes up now. One area. Please, look at it, see what we can do. I know we're gonna hear cries from human rights people, but sometimes as a side, and do what we have to do. Too many ivory hands in Jamaica. Number two. Um, would you please speak to Minister? I heard a person spoke of the compulsory service of young people. If I'm wrong, please correct me. What, after this one-year service of these young people, would they wish to continue where they are? Number two, sir, you spoke of...
That's three now, Sylvana.
I said, I did say three. And you spoke of 1.2 million unemployment. I better know how many of those employees are permanent and how many are part-time? Thank you very much.
Let me thank you for your question. As regards the Negligency Act, uh, my understanding is that the whatever issues that would have been addressed by the Negligency Act would perhaps be in other legislation. But if there is a specific clause or specific element of that act that you think is important, that is not addressed in another more recent legislation, please let me know. And speak to me afterwards about it, because perhaps it is something we can propose to the Legislative Committee, of which I sit on. Um, as regards to the youngsters who you spoke of in the one-year program, I imagine you're describing the Jamaica National Youth Service. Is that the program? Yes.
He said military.
Yes.
I don't know if you're service. My kids came, and I would know. Military service, I don't know.
Okay. So, the youth service that your children would have come through is a different youth service than the Jamaica National Youth Service now. The Jamaica National Youth Service is commandant, commandeered by the JDF. And it is a one-to-two-year program which introduces these youngsters to aspects of being a soldier. They are literally soldiers. After this preliminary period, they can choose to continue in service as soldiers, or they can choose to go into the police force, become teachers, engineers, whatever it is, whatever aspect they'd like to journey. But the importance is for them to have this two-year period of being exposed to the principles and the values of the JDF, and the learning and teachings beside the members of the JDF. Now, in addition to that, there is also another aspect of this, of the youth service and participation, which involves and exposes some youngsters who do not qualify to be soldiers, to be members of the JDF, but who are desirous of learning. They go into a separate program where they receive vocational and licensed training. There is specific training to help them, and throughout both periods, they're given a stipend. So, it increases the pool of persons that have been given opportunities. It is actually similar to something which was presented to me yesterday by Mr. Merritt. Is he here? Keith? He actually suggested that what we could do is to provide alternatives for so many of the youths by diverting them into employment. This is what the National Youth Service does. And it works in tandem with the Prime Minister's Lex Program, which is Learn, Earn, Give, and Save. Causes them to be learning, earning, giving back, or they have to contribute. And they're also caused or compelled to save some of their money for the end of their tenure. The final question you had relates to the distribution of the increases in employment as to part-time and food. I don't have the specifics as to that. But I do know that a bulk of it has to do with the the BPO sector, which we have been doing significant work in Jamaica to increase the opportunities for BPO and LPO, uh, so that we have more call centers in Jamaica, not just answering calls, but doing more substantive work relating to animation and graphics and and other things, other diverse industries which are used in Jamaica now as a whole, because we are seen not as offshore, but nearshore to North America.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emmy O'Grant, and I in Jamaica, I spend most of my time in New Orleans and Catherine. I don't really have a question. I really have a suggestion. Well, in some research that I did, there are citizens, North American, that, um, had a problem with homicides, and the homicides were a result of gangs. And what I learned from the research is that how they were able to reduce their homicides was to attracting the young people to wholesome activities before the gangs could recruit them. So, at ages of, say, between nine to 12, before the gangs came a-callin', they would recruit the young men into so, to sporting activities, IT, art and craft, young men and women. And that is how they were able to reduce the homicides in those cities in North America. So, I'm thinking, is that one of the ways that, one of the approaches Jamaica needs to take? Now, I know that in, that funds for social intervention are limited, are stretched. In my travels in North America, in the UK, I have come across many churches where the congregants are 80, 90, sometimes almost 100% Jamaican. You could call them Jamaican churches, essentially. So, one of the things I'm thinking in terms of increasing the amount of social intervention, can we partner churches in the diaspora with local churches so that you can have the level of social intervention required to recruit youngsters into wholesome activities before the gangs come a-callin'? So, th- those are things which I thought about. So, after that, what I decided to do, because I know that some of these things must be... Let's supr- pardon me? Oh, some of these things must be happening. So, what I did, I, I got in touch with an activist in Jamaica. His name is Darius Freckleton. Some of you might know him. And what he told me is that actually he has done this in Clarendon, and in the community of Palmetto Pen. They have been able to reduce crime there. Palmetto Pen even has a distinction that there was one gangster...
He is specific, has tried his own, so what did you...
I'm gonna finish. No, yeah, it's a bit close. I'm gonna close.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. So, what they did is what is called sports evangelism, where the churches in that community set up programs, basketball, netball, football, along with the freshmen, got the young people to come in. And they got the young people to come in, and then it provided a forum which the adults could rap with the youngsters, get the relationships going. And in Palmetto Pen, crime was reduced to the point where one gangster was trying to sort of revive the gangs in Palmetto Pen. And the communities beat that gangster and brought him into the police.
Thank you very much.
Hello, good afternoon, ladies and members of the panel. My name is Jenny Oliver. I'm from Clarendon, Jamaica. I've been living in Canada for about 20 years, so I think I fit into this category. Uh, one of the questions that I had before I came here was, um, what are some of the root causes for the violence that's happening in Jamaica? Because on social media, you'll hear things like, "They're born evil and they're born killers", which I thank my brother for addressing, that we're not born killers. And I've heard you identify some of the root causes, i.e., um, uh, the family structure or the value system. So, my question is, what are the plans to address some of those core root causes of what the problem is in Jamaica? I've identified that poverty, i.e. unemployment, is also one of them. So, what are some of the plans to address that? Thank you.
Wonderful question. And it also ties into what our brother, Wild, was saying in relation to his uh, focus on social intervention. So, let me just, uh, lay out what has been, what we define as a five-pillar national security strategy. It is a strategy which includes one, Swift and Short Justice, which is the working together with the Ministry of Justice to focus on having a more timely dispensation of cases. The backlog of cases is, is an incredible problem in Jamaica. I've served as a criminal prosecutor. I would take over 50 to 100 files per night, which makes no sense. Uh, but we've, we have invested in it. Justice Beaker opened a new courthouse in your parish, Clarendon. Uh, and we have increased the numbers of prosecutors, increased the numbers of investigators. Uh, we have spent, we've, we've made significant investments in the forensic capability of our institution there that deals with forensic, um, and, and, and medical legal issues. Uh, we are looking on a daily, daily database, and many other things that have been taking place to help to develop our investigative capacity and develop the whole structure of how we deal with justice and the dispensation of justice. That's number one. Two is the aspect that deals with social intervention. Now, we see it as crime prevention through social intervention. It speaks to what you've spoken about and also what my brother discussed, the article. Where we have a hyper-focus on developing programs that will keep the youth out of crime. We know the saying, it is, you know, it's better, prevention is better than cure. So, it is always going to be better for us to spend more money and invest our money and our time and our energy on keeping people out of crime, and spending the money to treat the people who are now matured in crime. So, we have developed a number of programs. Uh, I myself started a program in the, in the juvenile centers called We Transform, which is a youth empowerment and reintegration program. We also have over 80,000 youth from high schools all over the country that have been engaged by the Citizen Security and Justice Program through the Men With A Message Initiative. We have several, we have doubled the number of police youth clubs. We have made partnerships with the National Council for Drug Abuse, which targets youth. Uh, I think it's about 200 youth have benefited from that specific intervention. Uh, we have several other interventions that treat with it. But this is, this is one of the areas where the diaspora can be most effective. Because no matter how many we have as a government, there is always going to be more need for mentors, volunteers, and activities that can constructively keep the mind focused on a positive thing. So, I think it is a platform where the diaspora, Jamaicans who live abroad, can bring their own experiences, whether it is developing programs, contributing financially to programs, contributing your time or your expertise to coming to Jamaica and helping um, in developing or operating some of those programs. That's number two. Number three is situational prevention, which is our focus on creating an environment that allows for us to actually maintain law and order. You can't have a community where there's bush all over the place and expect to police it. Uh, if somebody calls the police, you run into the bush, you can't find it. As simple as that. When you look on what is happening now in St. James, Flankers, a lot of it speaks to the inability of the police to, to be able to regulate the space because of how it has been constructed, because there's settlements that have created there themselves. So, situational prevention speaks to our own capacity to regulate the public domain and to be able to actually affect law and order by how we create our environment. The fourth is rehabilitation and redemption. It speaks to the focus on the correctional services and on reintegrating and rehabilitating offenders. And I tell you, it's very, very important because it is the only area where we have empirical scientific proof that you're treating with persons that are criminals. And everything else is speculated. Here, we know that you have been tried, tested, and proven guilty. So, we have to invest the time, because most of those persons who are incarcerated are coming out in under three years. They're coming out in the same environment, to the same opportunities, or the same lack of opportunities. So, we have done significant work in developing partnerships that focus on reconstructing the spaces. We have a 300-man facility that has been opened now. We're looking on distributing this, the, rationalizing rather, the distribution of the inmates, integrating, um, empowerment programs which focus not only on training anything, but training them in specific areas where they will be able to create their own jobs, because it's already difficult to get a job. So, the focus that I had is for them to become their own entrepreneurs. Um, and, and other things taking place as well. But again, this is another area where the diaspora can become very, uh, can build the partnership, particularly because we have developed programs that will afford you an opportunity to come in and work. And the fifth pillar, the fifth pillar is effective policing, which treats with increasing in the resources, the mobility of the force. We have over 400 vehicles that have been bought for the force in the last year, several motorbikes. We have actually now focused on our border control. When I became Minister of State, one of the things I said first is, if you have a rat in your house, or you can catch a rat, first, you need to lock your door. Because if you don't lock your door, the rat may run out. If the rat run out, you don't know anyone knocking. Also, if your door is open and you catch one rat, why are you catching one rat? Five rats come in. So, we have to control our border. So, what we have done in the last year, and credit is to be given to the Minister of National Security for this, we have been able, as a team, to persuade the Cabinet to give the Ministry of National Security the largest allocation it ever received since independence. So, with that, we purchased material and equipment that increased our capacity in forensics. We have purchased vessels which have already papered itself in the amount of cocaine and drugs and guns that it has formed. We have purchased an aircraft, which is going to increase the capacity for JDF to see the space. And I tell you this, in one recent, uh, transportation of a V, of an aircraft from one of our partners to Jamaica, just in that trip, they were able to catch two criminal vessels. Imagine what we'll be able to do when we own our own. So, we have purchased it. It is being fitted now, and we should get it by July. So, incredible investments are being made in border control, in the capacity for the police, in training. We now just signed a memorandum of understanding with the University of Westin. These $28 million has been given as, uh, as an investment in training our officers and our citizens in scientific approach to policing, and other things that are being done. But I, I go through that summary, because I think it will help with the questions that other persons may have. That is the five-pillar national security strategy that includes social intervention, effective policing, situational prevention, swift and short justice, and rehabilitation and redemption.
Thank you, Minister.
As, um, Everett, uh, Everett, may I just say something?
Sure.
The diaspora has been engaged in the business of, um, fact-finding what are the issues that concern among the diaspora. And we, we did a study, and we have it here, which we will display, we will deploy to everyone in this room. It was done from September 2016. And among these were the diaspora support plans. And the major, the first one, the ultimate of crime prevention implementation, was to focus on following the five major areas in the short term, in short term. For example, the formal proposal for the replication of what is called the Safe City Program, which is similar to what the Minister is saying. The Safe City Programs, which is similar to what the Minister is saying. And it's a, it's a sort of multifaceted approach towards, as he said, crime solving. But this was being proposed and is being worked on by the, the task force that we have formed a couple years ago. So, you know, we, we are working internally, but what we need is help. We need people to volunteer, just like how Mr. Williams just volunteered. We need people... We need, we cannot sit and sit by and don't do anything and expect it to be done. It's called the bystander effect. Many, too many Jamaicans are suffering from it. So I'm saying to you, we need to get up, we need to stand up, we need to recognize what the issues are, what the ministers identify, what we're all identifying, and go for it and let's see if we can get rid of it as Jamaicans who really love Jamaica.
Thank you, Ebert. Do we have an next individual ready with the microphone?
Uh, good afternoon. I am, um, Honored Gordon Burke, noble members of the, um, audience. I am Doctor Reverend Richard Steve Mitchell, like him, Martin Luther King, and, um, what's that person on, a psychologist as well. Uh, not too long ago, we had the, um, Juliette bonus, the first lady of Jamaica at York University, who boasts the fact that Jamaica now has a, um, environmentally friendly school system whereby all can be educated without a tuition like in Ontario. And, and the distinguished member of, the member of parliament of Jamaica also spoke about border control. So that means that Jamaica now have the opportunity, especially for the male population, to, um, broaden the employment opportunity or be more employable in Jamaica, which will also increase our economical, mainly depression if we don't continue to have an influx of financial support.
Mr. Mitchell, can you ask a question, please?
So therefore, the question is to the minister again, who boasts again about the correctional, um, approach. And as situational preventative, preventative measures, um, do you, have you considered, um, starting, um, with grade school and implementing preventative measures of anti-crime? Like in Ontario, who has, as an early age, has, um, culturalized the population when it comes to safe sex. So when you, um, approaches that, this, uh, it's...
We get it. Can you ask a question, please? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. The answer is yes. Actually, the, and I, I tell you, when you filter down all that you said, it's a good question because it's an opportunity to highlight the good work of the Jamaica Constabulary Force. The JCF has been doing summer schools for children from the ages three up with the view of exposing them, making them more aware of how they themselves can be good, positive citizens that can contribute to the development of their communities. But it also has the mutual effect of making them have more confidence in the authority that is the police. And so you, you see that you get more information when these three-year-olds become sixteen or fourteen, and you also get a better response from them in their communities. So that is something that has been done, but guess what? There's much need for us to expand it. There's also need for us to expand, uh, the, the various groups that are affecting this, this work. So beyond the JCF, uh, we have done so also now with the, the other security forces, including firemen, who go around to the schools and have discussions with them. But I think this is also an opportunity for you, for the diaspora, to introduce perhaps some programs that can be utilized across the early childhood sector in conjunction, not just with national security, but with the Early Childhood Commission to make sure that we are developing the kinds of curriculum that make our youngsters develop into the good citizens that we seek. So I, I see where you're going. It is being done, more can be done. It's an opportunity for you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you very much, uh, Ebert. Minister, it's a, it's a perfect segue. In fact, um, there are people in this audience who have responded very positively to a call from the government of Jamaica to see to what extent the diaspora can contribute to, uh, early childhood education, especially in the zones of special operations. There are three so far. Now, when an appeal came out, a couple of organizations and individuals, uh, stepped forward, chief among them was Big Seven Promotions. And in fact, we have Big Seven here in this audience at the back. Uh, please stand up, Big Seven. Not just this, but this and brought together a group of persons, uh, to plan an activity. Uh, they're, they're called Friends of Jamaica, under the distinguished patronage of, I don't know why they get me involved in it, but they did. Uh, but Friends of Jamaica, which is everybody, all Jamaicans represented by a small team. And what they are trying to do is to put on a concert. And I have to tell you that one, two, three, four, twenty, twenty artists stepped forward to give their services for free on the twenty-seventh of April in this very Jamaican Canadian Association, which also, I have to add, contributed by giving the hall for next to nothing. So we have to thank the president for that. We have to thank Mr. Dr. Sylvanas Thompson, who also serves on that team amongst others in this very room. It is an example, ladies and gentlemen, of how much we love each other. We stepped forward quickly, we formed a committee, we responded to the call of the Prime Minister, we responded to the problem that exists, and what is it? It is intervention in early childhood, putting together playground equipment, equipment in classroom that will cause children in those zones to have the same standard and facilities, something the minister spoke about. In other words, making sure all Jamaicans can have access to satisfactory standard education and facilities so that no one Jamaican must be made to feel less than the other because he or she is as to, um, the burden by less than.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Back a little bit on the social intervention piece, um, I was hoping after Francis would have touched on it, but his plate was full. The Jamaica Diaspora Crime Task Force has also undertaken an initiative that we call, um, working with a known, the only karate expert, all of famous in Jamaica, Newton Francis, who's a member of the task force. And Newton James, I'm sorry, member of the task force, and we are presently putting forward a grant to get karate as discipline, not just as self-defense, to be taught in schools throughout the country. Newton James is willing to work with us on that, and we are hoping we have our fingers crossed that it will, it will happen. Minister, as you know, you and I have spoken on this topic before regarding forgiveness, a program of forgiveness for youth, kids who might have done minor offenses, but for some reason are handled or treated harshly instead of given a forgiveness, you know, a kind of a treatment that sometimes scarred their career or their future in terms of having a sentence or offense against their name. The question is, are we working in a way to resolve this or to address this piece? You know, stealing a man, but doesn't necessarily should be, you know, worth prison time.
Thank you.
Again, the quick answer is yes. And let me just identify a few things. One, there is a diversion program that has been instituted which causes most of the youngsters who are, um, involved in minor crimes like that to be diverted to counseling or to some kind of social intervention program instead of going to be incarcerated. That has endured to the benefit of not only youngsters, but also the correctional services where we see a significant decline in the numbers. So since I became minister in twenty sixteen to now, you've seen a steady decline in the numbers of inmates and wards, which has caused us to be able to rationalize the numbers who are populated there now in better spaces and different spaces across the institutions. Um, also, one of the things that I did was to reach out to the UNODC and ask for them to send us some assistance. And they sent two consultants who came down and who engaged me and my staff and also an interministerial committee with a view to having a comprehensive reform of our juvenile justice system. That's not national security. That's not justice. That is the entire continuum that focuses and interacts and impacts our juveniles. And so that has been done. It is at the completion stage where they are, I think they've already sent the document to the Ministry of National Security. And now there needs to be more connectivity between the ministries and agencies to move it forward. The last thing I'll say before Mr. Blackburn has my head is mental health. Nobody touched on it directly, but I just say it because it's also connected to one of the issues that was of paramount importance to me. The mental health issue is something which impacts a lot of our youth. And it is not a crime issue, it's a public health issue. The way we are approaching it or how we define it as a people, as communities, is what is really the problem. Because there are so many persons who could be treated that are not treated, so many persons who are not diagnosed, some who are misdiagnosed, who, that then leads to criminal activity. Much of that criminal activity is not on their own volition, but because persons have either done something, uh, confronted them, or whatever the reason is. So I tie that in because the juvenile justice and the mental health were two particular issues that I took on, um, in, in my last portfolio, which I will continue in this portfolio to try to address.
So what I'm going to do, we have fifteen minutes, but we have six speakers, and I just want to acknowledge who the six speakers are. For Dorothy on this side, so you have lady with the microphone. Then I go back to the gentleman with the glasses on, that will be the next speaker. That lady with the stripe who has her microphone, back to David Mitchell, and then back to you at the back, sir, and my final then comes back to Dennis. Sorry, just so we can respect time, we went over a half an hour, so let us go.
You.
You're on. One, two, six.
Okay, um, good evening. I want to say greetings to you all. Um, my name is Pauline Clark Gomai, and I'm the Director of the Eagle Counseling and Support Center and President Lady Laidon for the Correctional Service Canada Volunteer, um, to bring in organizations from the community stake into the federal correctional facility for programs though, like I hear of the Big Brother. And I, I heard, um, General talking about, um, the, the community dinner on the, the twenty-seventh for you. I mean, it's my speaker, keynote speaker for the twenty-ninth of April. So I am just glad that I'm here and I know that I'm going to talk to you guys, sir, because it's deeper with the program than I just learned about this short minute. And I'm just glad I'm here to be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Want to go back, you pass your mic here.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Andre. I'm from Spanish, from St. Catherine, Jamaica.
Andre, last name, please.
Andre Smith. Okay, so I have three, three quick questions. Uh, the first one is, um, and I'm sorry that, uh, everyone is coming here to find out what people we have saw the issue Jamaica. My first question is, what people, Jamaicans living in Jamaica have on this, um, is it that going to the people of Jamaica to ask for their input and how can they contribute? So that's my first question. Uh, my second question is, um, will the, the government of Jamaica recognize crime as a national issue and not a JPR, a community issue? Because we need to work together as one people. If it is, we're going to work together as one diaspora, then we need to work together as one government for the people of Jamaica. Uh, my third question, um, I finished my undergraduate degree at York, and I was surprised that York offered a course in Jamaican语言, Patwa. So what is it that the Jamaican government is going to recognize that a lot of people in Jamaica understand and learn better in Patwa than English? And what is it that the government is going to recognize Patwa as part of culture, as part of heritage? Something that I see everyone in the Arctic Bear Conference around the world, probably from. I work for the compensation board of Ontario and all the time, my board, I speak seven in Patwa. Now, if you're from Jamaica, we're talking in Patwa. So why is it that the government is going to officially recognize Jamaican Patwa as part of culture and...
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Clark, for your comments before. Um, in relation to going to the people, yes, that's part of our democracy. So the people are always going to be an important part of what we have as a developed democracy. But we do engage also in several town hall activities, and we have gone all across the country, particularly to the hotspot areas, um, engaging them through the Ministry of National Security, through the JCF, um, and focus not only on communities, but going to the high schools as well, going to the primary schools through the violence intervention programs, through the PMI programs. So there is constant communication and dialogue with the communities. As it regards to crime as a national issue, the succinctant says, yes, it has, it has always been a national issue. The concern is, is really how we execute it and how we operate it. And if you look, for instance, on the state of emergency as it has been instituted in the last year, you will see a great distinction in how it is being operated, in the level of professionalism of the Jamaica Constabulary Force and the JDF, in the commentary that you hear from the community. We literally have communities begging, "Minister, we want it in our state, we want it in my constituency." Why is because the state of emergency no longer, it no longer means death, it no longer means to the community members abuse. What it now means is a breath of fresh air. I can leave my door open. I know that the JDF and the JCF will treat me with professional attitude and condom. And so, yes, it is a national issue that is demonstrated also in the Houses of Parliament where you see both opposition and government agreeing to the legislation being instituted, both opposition and government, despite the fact that we correlate each other, agreeing to the extension of these activities. That is what we call a unified approach. We've even done it in how we've titled the strategy. So the strategy itself is a national security strategy, and we've been very careful to title it in that way as opposed to just, um, some kind of label that would be focused only on crime and only on violence. It's a national security strategy. The third question as it regards to Patwa, let me say this, insofar as my knowledge, Patwa is recognized globally, but it is not a designated language that is utilized in commerce or in transactions that would allow for Jamaica to use it in our partnership. In a, in this shrinking global environment, we have to make ourselves viable. So even though we would want to capitalize on Patwa, we do capitalize on it. When we are interacting with friends and partners, we have to do so in a way that they can understand us. I do think, however, that you have a point, that perhaps there is some opportunity for us to evaluate whether we can do more in letting the world know of Patwa. But we would have a lot of work to do in structuring what we mean and how do we spell different words and how do we speak as even in Jamaica. I must say, I can't understand some of the people from St. Elizabeth where my mother got hurt. And I don't know what some of the people from St. Thomas, where the rest of my family come from St., and I know Patwa. So we have some work to do, but I do appreciate where you're going with it.
To your point.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheryl Hamilton. I'm from Westkinston, Jamaica, and I'm firmly with it in. I usually take my vacation this time, every time I'm off from work. Minister, I, I heard this mention about me, the, the five pillars and the social intervention, but sir, I want us to really focus on the parenting aspect. Because, to be honest... We understand that the lack of proper parenting is a big aspect in the monster that is affecting us now. So sir, we want you to, we want the government to pay close attention to the parenting groups. Parenting groups were formed out of the CSJP. And I must say, the Fletcher's and Parenting Association was one such group that was formed. I'm a founding member. But we're not getting the attention, not getting the traction from government. And I think that we need, the government need to focus specifically on the parenting group, the parenting aspect, so that we can, you know, force.
You had me until you said, you're not getting the traction from government. Because I must tell you, we have invested...
Not enough.
That's a different thing.
Not enough, not enough.
That's a different thing, and that I'm agreeing with. And it's not because we don't want to, it's because we have to allocate this and what we have. But you're correct, there's a Parenting Support Commission, which you know of, which has a national responsibility to engage parents across the length and breadth of Jamaica, training them, teaching them, giving them support in carrying on their duties. That needs to have a significant investment. Right there, you and I are at one, at either, I agree. CSJP, even the We Transform program that we have in the correctional institutions, we have as part of that, an element of training, where we invite the parents back to the institution for them to see what their youngsters are doing, and also to engage in seminars. So, it's being done, I agree, more can be done, more has to be done. But again, I always go back to solution. It is an opportunity for somebody like yourself, who has expertise and the knowledge, to get groupings together and to see how we can start, one community at a time, engaging them on a consistent basis to train them up. So perhaps it's an opportunity for us here.
Thank you, Mr. Next question? We have three more questions, so we want to respect that order that we have. Mr. Mitchell, you're next.
Minister, Dave Mitchell, Association of Black Men vs. Justice Leader. Two quick questions. The first question is, do you believe that Canada is providing Jamaica with sufficient information in which to manage individuals that are criminally deported from Canada there in terms of their contribution to the crime situation? Secondly, do you see a benefit for us here in Canada, in particular Ontario, for advocating with our government that those individuals that would be subject to removal based on serious criminality must participate in programs that would minimize their potential to be recidivist when we were charged?
As it regards to the first question, let me just say that within the context of the partnership that we have between Jamaica and Canada, both states have been responsible. Is there an opportunity for us to evaluate and reevaluate and perhaps see where information exchange can be increased? Yes, but that is something which, at a diplomatic level, we'll have to negotiate and agree. In relation to the second issue, the quick answer is, is yes. There's always going to be a benefit to any, any aspect of activity that will lead to the reduction of recidivism. Whether it is in the correctional institutions or as it regards to deportation. And that is, that is something which is very sensitive. Because we have to remember, somebody who's deported is distinct from somebody who has been convicted in Jamaica. You understand what I'm saying? So, it requires us, it requires us, Mr. Mitchell, to have a very cogent and comprehensive discussion as to how we would be able to, I don't want to say mandate, but ensure that they are involved in programs that will benefit them as persons who have been voluntarily deported or involuntarily deported, whichever one, as well as...
This is serious criminal, not pure immigration. If you go to the penitentiary...
Mr. Mitchell, what I will do, I will ensure that you can append extra to your statements. It's just because we have to respect the other speakers in time and have been looked at.
No, no problem, this is how you deal with a CJ, so it's all right.
But that's from my understanding, you're speaking about persons who have been involved in serious criminal activity.
And that is in accordance with the removal from Canada.
So, and so my quick answer is, yes. I, in my view, personal view, I believe, particularly my experience in corrections, that there would be a significant benefit to activities that would lead to reduction in recidivism. As to whether that activity can be mandatory, is something we should have to discuss at a national and international level.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, good evening. My name is Orville Patrick, and I'm a Big Seven Promotion President. And sir, I want to just offer a private slumming thing. And I have it, you know, over here as a commercial. And we're saying, it's not property, it's greed. Just a commercial for the kids, because they'll get it. Just like if I sing "I Love You," they're probably singing back with me. So if we tell them, it's not property, it's greed. And we do a commercial of that, and show anyone of these gangsters, you realize it's not property while they're doing it. Because at any time you get them, they have more money than the poor lady in the neighborhood. So they tell you, "Speak, I'm from Trench Town, I'm from that." Trench Town is not because you are poor. Because the money you have at the time when you get caught is more than your poor mother has running your own home. So my thing is, you have a commercial that just says, "It's not property." Crime when they talk about, "It's not property, it's greed." And we build, and if you use a Barney character, don't use that entertain, because they're like passing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Williams from Centre, this might be a little... How do we, with the criminal situation, where a lot of ministers know of and support these criminal guys in the area? How are we gonna come back on those kind of criminal... And with the police, where all the police involved in all this extortion? And with all this police, where involved in all this criminal activities and this extortion? How are we gonna come back with all this kind of situation? And the last thing, Charlie, I paid two fees when I was in Jamaica. I paid the government fee, and then I paid one fee for my things to go true. How are we gonna stop all this kind of situation that's happening down there? Because these are criminal activities too.
Okay, Minister?
In relation to your brother Wilson, Williams, in relation to your first question. We have introduced in Jamaica several agencies that focus on persons like ministers of government and high officials. We have the Contractor General, and for police, we have the Government, which is a hyper-focus on reading corruption and on introducing awareness of anti-corruption activities, particularly for those persons who have this fiduciary responsibility to the country. Recently, we passed the Integrity Commission bill, which will see the merging of some of these agencies to make them more efficient and even stronger in their evaluation, examination, and operation in making sure that persons like myself do not abuse the position that we have. So, very good question. Not a question that's uncomfortable to me at all, because I've been on record as indicating publicly that persons who put themselves up for office must be ready and open to be ridiculed. That is one of the things that comes with being a leader. And so, we have to expose our bank accounts. We have to expose the bank accounts of family members. If we are involved in any kind of activity, we have to get declarations. And it goes on and on. But the goal is to do what you said, which is to keep corruption down and to prevent corruption. In addition to that, the Office of the Contractor General, which is now going to be moved to the Integrity Commission, does a lot of awareness in schools, because it goes back to what our sister said a while ago. Parenting and developing from the early childhood stage, the sensibility, the awareness, the sensitivity to corruption is what is going to create a pool of people from which you choose your police, your nurse, your leaders. So, instead of just targeting police and politicians, we're looking at developing citizens who are very aware of why we want to prevent corruption, why we want to move away from crime. So we develop that pool of persons from which you can choose to manage. The second, MOKA as well. MOKA, which is, again, just recently, we passed a bill to ensure that MOKA... Well, it's not passed yet, we are in the stage of passing it through Senate, where MOKA, which is a major organized crime division, will be independent of the Jamaica Constabulary Force. And its focus is on serious crime and on preventing issues, as you have discussed. So that is the three of the agencies focused on these areas. And there are other areas, other agencies, and other initiatives that are focused on crime prevention.
I'm going to, sorry, make your apologies, we do have one more, and then we'll do the wrap-up.
Good afternoon, Minister. I'm Ren Mendez, President of Brandonville, I'm an association Northern Clarendon. I was recently in conversation with a friend of mine, and I deliberately saved a little bit of our conversation to the end because I really wanted to take with you. And I'll share a little bit of it with you, and it goes like this. We're in conversation about the crime in Jamaica. And he said to me, "Ren, you see any of the government in Jamaica, find a solution to the criminal or the crime problem in Jamaica." You know, say, we can't buy a square a lot in Jamaica. Because everybody in the diaspora would be going home to buy a piece of the square in Jamaica. So, I am hoping, and with every law-abiding Jamaican, who, all and abroad, is hoping that your ministry, you and your ministry, will find a solution to that problem.
Perhaps, what's your name?
Ren Mendez.
Ren Mendez, Mr. Mendez. Perhaps that's a note that we should really be ending on. Because it is part of the discussion, which I think I had here, and I know I had yesterday, where I said if we are able to, we're able to properly maintain law and order in Jamaica, our greatest problem will be border control. I think I mentioned it. Because it is not only Jamaicans who will want to buy that square. You have to appreciate how significant we are for this planet. Our size, in comparison to our impact, is the measure. There is no other nation, no other country, that can boast of having its flag in every other country. When I walk the road of Chile, I'm in Chile, passing one of their markets, and you see a number of flags, perhaps sixteen, the Jamaican flag is in the center. So understand who we are. And I understand that, and you're correct. If we can, if we can deal with it, then that will be our issue. One thing I'll tell you, and I tell everyone here, it is not only the government's problem. I know that's not what you were saying, but I just want to reiterate it for anybody who's here that the crime and violence in Jamaica is all of our problem. Which means that it will have to engage everybody in order to solve it. And I think that that is perhaps the greatest positive outcome from this engagement here. A million Jamaicans even standing up, which shows you that we have enough persons, just in Canada, that respect, that understand, that love, that care for, that are committed, and that feel responsible for Jamaica, that I know that we can find the solutions to our problems. Our responsibility as a government is to create now the mechanism that will allow for you, Mr. Mendez, to be able to contribute to that solution, to the change-making. And that is what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We just had some house speakers today. I just want, I know some of us have seen the gentleman that has been walking around taking photos. And this is via livestream, it's being recorded. So that's coming from the Jamaica Diaspora Show, and as we heard, it's from Hartford. So thank you again, Mr. Millward, I appreciate that. It also goes across to the United States and UK, and along here with Canada. I want us to also acknowledge, Mr. Junior's gonna come up for the closing, but after that, we also have a little performance by Mr. Malachi Smith, who is a dub boy, who's gonna close us off himself, and that's proud of our line, I bet you. Kevin, without further ado.
Ladies and gentlemen, Minister, High Commissioner, CJ, Reverend. To everyone that's here today, I want to really thank you for supporting this event. Was it worth your while? We had a distinguished panel that spoke to us about the realities of Jamaica and what we can do to make sure that we support Jamaica very well. There's a quote that I had to write down from the minister, said, "We have the solution right here." And with the solution, we have to create partnerships. The partnership is already created, now we have to make sure that we move it forward. Over thirty years ago, I met a beautiful young lady. And when she became my wife, I had to make sure that I took care of her. I had to make sure that I'd take her out to dinner every so often, and do those nice things so she would stay with me, right there? So as we create this partnership, there are things that we need to do to keep it going. And a part of that is resources. We have to make sure that as we identify these resources, we also have, as we identify these solutions, we have to make sure that we put some resources with it, right? And I'm not telling you, if you got a hundred thousand to throw at that, fine. But whatever you have, I'm not Canadian or US. If, whatever you have to support as we move forward, please make sure that you can contribute. Sitting down with the minister, he's identified a number of challenges. He's identified with us a number of solutions. And unlike where we live, you know, the taxes can go up, and they'll throw in a few dollars to resolve these issues. Jamaica is not the exact same way. So however we can do it, it is worth our while. My parents send lots of money back to Jamaica. My generation send out a few dollars. My daughter that's sitting there, she'll go on vacation. My granddaughter will go on vacation. So the economy of Jamaica is not thriving the way that it used to through the diaspora. So it is for us, not only to identify the solutions, but also to provide the resources. I'd like to really thank the team that worked with me to pull this off. My believers, Reverend, thank you very much, sir. And everybody else that came in from across the border, Sean, Mr. Isaacs, and everybody else. Very good job. So, thank you very much, and we really appreciate the JCA for partnering with us, stepping in the door so that this can work. To the faith leaders, thank you for your prayers, thank you for your guidance, your leadership. Because without that, I mean, if you come from Jamaica, you have to go to church sometime or the other. So again, let us, you like my potter? Kevin Tudor from Spanish Towne through Birmingham, you're good. So again, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Please leave mind for the fundraiser given back to the land of our birthdate, April twenty-seventh. Tickets are available through Sylvanas for twenty dollars. And as stated by Big Seven, it goes back to assist with various endeavors on the Rock. So, without further ado, can we have our closing little entertainment here with Mr. Malachi Smith? And yes, Kevin, and I almost forgot. Everybody, you should have this paper that's going around, it's for everyone that's willing to participate. Please fill it out so that they can be able to pick it up this evening before we go, because it is going back to the United States with them for their database. So I'd ask you to please expedite that so that we can get it over. So without further ado, Malachi?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'm going to do this speech, which I think is very applicable to the gathering. And it's titled "My Jamaican Tongue." And I happen to have performed all over the world, served the Jamaica Constabulary Force and also Miami Police Department, and is a proud member of the task force too. But whenever I go, I remember I was in Taiwan and I, we were reading at the most prestigious high school in the country. And I read first and after I did this poem, all the other writers, were there notable writers in that society, started writing poems in their own native tongue. My Jamaican tongue too sweet for me to throw it away. When you hear me talk, I don't blame you. Like my professor for Luca circumcised, dash with Jamaican tongue to get recognized. My tongue is African, Caribbean, jump talk, food pan percussion, banjumentus, kia, rast, rasta, reggae, palate, sugarcane, sweat slave with blood and pain, blend that to English, Chinese, Syrian, Indian. My tongue is out of many one. When I dash with my tongue, me love it to me heart. Before I step back home, me can't never in a park. It too sweet like calypso. Your tongue is ballroom dance, for me a go-go. I don't have to draw my bowels like Robin shoot in a bowl. I made my point. My tongue just flows like notes from that drum and trombone. I don't envy you for yours, so leave me with my own. You think it's everything I say I want you to understand? My tongue is a disguise, part of my oral tradition. When your ancestors died and couldn't afford to leave legacy, they will wrap up their tongue in a tide and pass it on to me. Stop your rank. Your tongue was derived and so too is mine. If yours is whiskey, mine is pure wine. Half rum, but fire dance at wood skin. Your tongue is your majesty's, mine a few is empty. So you can cast your innuendo to an escrow, I don't give a damn, because when you hear me talk, you must always hear Jamaican, one hundred percent. Thank you so much.